Call the order of the meeting of April the 20th, 2020 to the County Commission. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, those commissioners that have made an effort to be here and technology-wise, we thank you for that, as well as our department heads and other elected officials that I've seen that have joined us here, we thank you for that. And then those that have joined us by TV tonight or live stream, either through Wilson County Public Television or Charter 198, AT&amp;T 99, or streaming live on Twitch TV. Tonight's meeting will be held in accordance with Governor Lee's Executive Order Number 16, in order to conduct essential business for Wilson County government only while protecting the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans during this pandemic. You have all been muted at this time. In order for us to get our meeting started tonight, I will ask Commissioner Ali at this time if he will unmute himself and take care of the prayer and the pledge, and then once that's done, then we'll all unmute ourselves in order to get our business started tonight. Commissioner Ali?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Hello, everyone. I was hoping to be standing before you this evening, but it is different and tough times on all of us. Things are looking better, so I pray the next time we all can be together in the same room. Until then, please stay safe and healthy. I would like to ask the pastor of Last Point Church here in Lebanon, my friend Pastor Jim Pudik, to lead us in prayer this evening.
Appreciate you allowing me to join you as a pastor. By God, in Jesus' name we love you and we thank you, Heavenly Father, that you love us. That you love us so much and that you sent your Son, Jesus, to die for us all these days and this according to the Word. God, I pray with this County Commission meeting this evening, that we hope the Word tells us that if we ask for wisdom, that you will give it to us, and that you will give it to us abundantly and without reproach. So I pray for wisdom over every member of this commission, that gives them the supernatural ability to make decisions in times like these with their heart, give them the strength and endurance to proceed to a form of perfection of your will for this county. God, I believe that you will do that. I plead with God, Jesus, over each of their home, believing, Heavenly Father, that you can you alone hold us in your righteous faith. I pray all of these things to believe and expect him, that he is just that, in your body, the seat by you, and placed by you, to be the work that you have been working on, as you bless him for it, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic, for we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with beauty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ali. If you will, at this time, please unmute all of your mics before we can take our roll call, and I'll do those individually. And when I call your name, please just answer to your presence at the night's meeting. Commissioner Fields?
Here.
Commissioner Bannock?
Here.
Mr. Franklin?
Here.
And Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. McFarland?
Here.
Mr. Rich?
Here.
And Mr. Scruggs?
Mr. Rich.
Mr. Costley?
Here.
And Mr. Patton?
Here.
And Mr. Walker?
Here.
And Mr. Gentry?
Here.
And Commissioner Ash?
Here.
And Commissioner Robinson?
Here.
And Mr. Jones?
Here.
And Mr. Dow?
Here.
And Mr. Weathers?
Here.
And Mr. Ali?
Here.
And Mr. Breeze?
Here.
And Mr. Glover?
Here.
And Mr. Stafford?
Here.
And Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
And Mr. Marlowe?
Here.
And Mr. Venata? Did you unmute yourself? I know she's muted, I see her presence. I got you. Commissioner Bishop?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay. Everyone we have is on board, so we have 25 present and zero absent at the night's meeting. This time, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Patton for the report from the steering committee.
This steering committee met on Thursday, April the 9th, at 6:05 PM in the County Commission Room. Minutes during your packet, as they be received, just filed.
Second.
And a motion to second, any discussion? Okay, I got a motion that time by, who was my motion by?
Sir.
Sir Pat, and the second was by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As the record reflected, it was unanimous. Commissioner Patton, please go forward with the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the, for adoption of the agenda, adopt, sorry, for the other agenda, consent agenda, I'll get right to it.
Second. I got a motion for adoption of the agenda by Commissioner Patton, and a second by who?
Mr. Glover.
Mr. Glover, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? But the record reflected, it was unanimous. There is no consent agenda, so we'll move forward. Report from the minutes committee, Commissioner Bishop.
The minutes committee met remotely, due to the, you know, about a limit, on April the 9th. County Mayor Husko and County Attorney Jennings were physically at the meeting, in the committee church meeting room. I keep specialist Ellen Wilson and third channel director Theresa Bush were also present to provide technical support. The minutes for this meeting are in the packet, as well as the lights, County Commission Committee. And I make a motion, this will be received and filed.
Second. I got a motion by Commissioner Bishop, and a second by Ms. Robinson. Commissioner Robinson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
But the record reflected, it was unanimous as well. Do I hear a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Don't move.
Don't move.
I got a motion and a second. That'd be a motion by Cindy Bannock, and a second by Commissioner Weathers. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. At this time, we'll have a communication from the chair. Aaron, if you will mute our members. I do want to try to go over some.
Mayor, we can't hear you.
You're muted, Mayor.
We don't hear a thing.
Okay, now unmute them all, Aaron, and now we'll start.
Still, uh-uh.
You're muted, Mayor.
Still can't hear you.
Okay, now we're good.
There you are.
Okay.
Good.
Well, if you will, mute yourself, so I do not hear your background, and we'll go from there. I said, first of all, I want to thank you for all you have done, is this commission and the commission in the past as well, and the decisions you've made, mainly speaking of those that have built and reserved our fund balance, because these are times when the, this will be very important to us. I want to give you a quick update about our budget. I tried to put this in writing several times, and it was just too lengthy for me to do. Mr. Maynard had done an excellent letter to you, and he may have some other words here at the end of our meeting when he gives his report, to sum up more of what I'm saying tonight. But I kind of want you to just think about, if you will, we'll take it in maybe three parts tonight. First of all, as we look at this year's budget and where we are, our property tax for this year, we're in good shape there, and the fact that 99.85% of collection rate has been taken care of as we speak. As you know, the tornado happened after March, after, on March the 3rd, after most of the collections were good there. And so as we look at our overall revenues for our general fund balance, we'll see that 87% of those collection rates have been done as well, still with April, May, and June out there on those revenues. As you think about sales tax, sales tax is two months behind on collections and reporting, so therefore, January and February will be reported in March and April. So our two months that are going to suffer really for this budget season will be May and June. Now, as we speak right now, our sales tax collections at about 78%, again, with April, May, and June to come in, but that's not a bad number as we speak. Also, to note that the tornado that happened also will generate some sales tax revenue just because of all the rebuilding efforts. As we look towards hotel motel tax, it's a collection rate right now of 81%. Again, with the tornado, we have a lot of those workers, dislocated workers, that are there in those hotels that are trying to help rebuild us, as well as insurance agents that have come in to assess the damage, and so they have helped keep our hotel occupancy at a decent rate. So those are our revenues, as we see those, we're definitely low, and will probably be low on the sales tax. I want you to turn your attention to the adequate facility tax, and if you remember, we had a kind of a surge right before the new rate went in, so a lot of people jumped in to buy those and get those taken care of, and then we had a question, you know, will that slack off over the next few months? But I went back and talked with Tom Beshear today and said, hey, can we compare March of 2019 with March of 2020? We were only down three adequate facility tax applications, so therefore, it really did not have any effect on us. Our collections rate was up from March of 19 to March of 20, $235,000 in the residential side, $178,000 in the commercial side, so overall, for March, we were up $413,000. When we talked about our permits to date, we were up $1,695 overall, year-to-date, from this time, this year to last year. On the adequate facility tax, the actual revenue number that is up, if I combine the commercial and the residential, up $5.8 million. So we believe that will help us there as we go to look into cover that shortfall that's there. Now, those, of course, as you remember, were enacted for us to build a jail, two WEMA stations and a convenience center. And of course, with the climate that we're in, the sheriff has talked about holding off, and we all agree that we'll hold off on building the jail and those two WEMA stations and convenience center until we know about our economic standing. And so therefore, that revenue can be used to help us overcome those shortfalls there. Our collection rate right now, as far as the budget went on adequate facility tax, is up at 165% right now. Single-family permits are also only down one compared to last year at this time, and that's just at the county level, not in the cities, and the collection rate in the county permit is up $82,000. So those are funds that we believe will help us hopefully end up in a positive note as we end up this year. I will add one more thing to that, the internet sales tax, as the enforcement of Rule 129 that allowed those destination taxes to go to the county where it was originated in, is up 48%. That's an extra $1 million there, $1,800,000 really, to be exact. When you look at our fund balance right now, it's at about $10.4 million in the general fund, and, you know, as we talk to our elected officials about looking at their budgets, we've asked them to do two things really, turn us in a status quo budget for this year, and we want those to be turned in to our finance office by May the 1st, and then look for ways that you can make cuts going into next year. So that's two things we did, but we did ask them as well to see how much money can they turn back this time, things that they don't necessarily have to do, especially since we've been shut down, to hopefully help us build on the fund balance and to create that, a little bit more depth there, so that we can use that as we go forward. As we talk about our budget process, that's a kind of a quick overview of your finances for this last budget, or the budget that we're in now. As I said, we asked them to do the two things on their budget as far as they prepare for that, but we also know that as they turn that in, we'll have more data coming in and be able to actually look at it a little bit better. So we left some date on your timeline that I sent you on May the 19th and the 20th to go back and revisit those status quo budgets. Do we see and have enough data at that time in order to make some cuts now? If not, then we will pass a budget with your permission on June the 30th, a status quo budget, and we'll revisit every month, July, August, and before September 1, if we need to amend our budget, we can do that. The comptroller will allow us to do that. I will add this one note, and Mayor Jennings may speak to it if he needs to, but as these department heads turn in their status quo budgets to all the commissioners, if you look at the status quo budget that you got, the same one you passed last year, and you decide there's no need for you to meet, then you can email your chairman and let him know that, and the chairman will then email that or talk to the department head or elected official and say they could pass that budget on to the budget committee. I believe that is right. So you still are in the driver's seat, you still have the right to have a meeting, but if you choose not to do so, you can let your chairman know that based on them being just status quo meetings. As we look towards next year, and try to think about what that property, what our property tax looks like, we know that we had 170 total lost properties that will affect our tax revenue. 17% really of what their tax bill is what they're going to pay according to Mr. Goodall as we reached out to him and talked about the assessment that would be credited to these 170 totally lost properties. We are going to file some legislation, as Sevier County did back when they had the Gatlinburg fires, along with Putnam County, Davidson County, and Smith County, and ask the state to see if they would make us whole on that tax that we've lost there. We will definitely do our best and involve the other legislatures from another three counties to give us some help hopefully in that. Mr. Goodall, of course, is looking to tell us what those numbers are, so we'll know what we'll be asking for, and he's working on those as we speak. If those properties that were damaged by the tornado can be reestablished by September 1, there'll be no tax credits for those, and they will be, they will pay their full list of tax bill at that time if they can be made whole. If they can't, then that will be something that we will look at at the Board of Equalization as we move through that. The second week of June this year, we hope to start that one. You've heard a little bit about the $1.6 million that the state gave the counties. Just to remember or to remind you of that, that 1.6 is not stimulus money, it's not 1.6 to go do a bunch of things that we wanted to do from time to time but didn't have the money to do. It's actually to go and kind of supplant in our budget, and so we've reached out, they kind of geared to certain fields of where this money can be spent at, but we've reached out to IT and to our maintenance budget and asked both of those departments to identify things that they were already going to do anyway, and we will apply that grant, which we get that in April the 30th. We'll apply for that grant, and if we get that 1.6, which we're hoping we are, then we'll pay for those things out of their budgets, and then we'll take the money that we're going to be getting from us to do those things and put that back in the general fund in order to help cover the revenue that we know that we'll be losing as of sales tax deficits. So that is how we plan to use the 1.6, it's not extra, it is really to supplant and to add money back into the general fund. The legislature just wanted to be sure that we tagged it and used it for something that we were already going to do, not something that we were going to dream up to do. That's why they made it a grant of that nature. As we look forward to the tornado, we know as we close out this year's budget, departments like Rhodes, WEMA, Sheriff, and Landfield suffered a lot of extra cost in fuel, equipment, and overtime, and those were hoping to get back that money, of course, from the FEMA reserve, the FEMA funds that we will put forward and try to get that back. Me and Mr. Maynard have talked, and as we talked on that through the comptroller suggestions as well, they've asked us to, we could use a capital outlay note or a small SBA loan that would be low interest, to borrow the money to make those four departments whole, and that way you wouldn't be depleting your fund balance, and you would have it as you went into next year in case you needed those reserves. It'd take 12 to 18 months for those FEMA funds to come in, so when they come in, then we'll turn around and pay off those loans that we made for those departments. That gives you a little bit of idea of looking towards this coming budget season. We did reach out and talk to Ashley McEnalty about, you know, many times you guys say, well, we're quite in debt, and what's going to happen? Can we make our bond payment? Just so you know, again, through your best practices, our 150, we have three different debt service accounts, 151, which is general debt, and then we have two others that are rural debt service is 152, and then a special purpose school fund is 121. Our reserves, in which we try to make sure that we always follow that we do not issue debt unless we have a good fund balance there, and I'm happy to say that after our 151 fund balance has enough in it that if we didn't receive any revenues at all for a year, we could make a payment for a year there through the reserves, so we have 100% fund balance in that. As you look at 152 and 121, those are a little bit different in that we'll have to keep a good eye on them because they're pretty much backed by the sales tax growth that fills both of those funds, but we do have 80% capacity in them as we speak right now as well. We have always only averaged estimated growth of 3% in the sales tax column, it's normally five or better, but we've always low estimated there, so we do feel decent and prepared as we get into the, the fund balances there for the debt payment if we have to do that. That's a quick overview of those funds. If you have any questions, feel free to call me or call Mr. Maynard, and Mr. Maynard will probably have some more data to give you as he gives his report. I will tell you this, for your constituents, that the Health Department had a drive-in testing site this weekend at their place. Now, they do free testing every day. You just have to call the Health Department, give them your symptoms, they will sign up an appointment for you, you can drive up, stay in the car, and get that done. Those are all free. But this last weekend, they started at 7:55 and ended at 1:45 because the state would be there to pick up their test at 2 o'clock. They did 275 drive-through people, they turned away 150 people because of the lack of time. We will not have them back this week, but we hope to have them the next two weekends back to do that again in our county. A big thank you to the WEMA organization, the Sheriff's Department, the Lebanon Police Department, and the Health Department for putting this on. We definitely will have a better staff the next time, hopefully maybe more testing sites, and so we can, will not miss out on those 150 the next time. Last thing I will say to you before we move on with our meeting tonight is that, you know, we try to still communicate about different things that are going on right now throughout our county, and we've reached out to the County Health Board, that's a board that's automatic on our committee list, if you look at it, and that board, that County Health Department Board, is consists of actually the school superintendents, it's a 10-member board, Health Department representatives, a veterinarian, two doctors, a pharmacist, a dentist, and a nurse. We've added three mayors from the city, the three police chiefs from the city, and the sheriff, the EMA director, and the EMA chief, the CEO at Vanderbilt-Wilson Hospital, the three chamber presidents, and some state Health Department reps. As we move forward, we meet once a week and just kind of report out so we can have a good idea of what all is going on. We will move forward this week with asking G.C. Hickson to be a part from the economic development side, and our county medical director, Dr. McKinney, we're going to ask him to be a part of that as well. But that is kind of a think-tank group that meets once a week to talk about exactly what's going on. So I wanted you to know that this, this is happening, where we can keep good communication going between our folks, and we have actually, our county has been asked to be a part of 30 different groups that the governor has put together about reopening Tennessee. Our group is really a part of, or the mayor's office is a part of, a local government reorganization and reopening. As you heard today, probably, that the governor said that he would lift his stay of the order, a stay of a, at home order on April 30th, but that doesn't mean that everything will be just turned back out to the public. That will be released probably Thursday or Friday. That will happen in phases as we move forward. But I just wanted to kind of give you that update. Again, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call or call Mr. Maynard at any time, and we'll be glad to maybe set up maybe a time where we can all get on here and talk, maybe through a work session to let you ask any questions that you would like to ask. This time, I would ask you to unmute yourself as we continue the rest of our business tonight. And Mr. Goodall, are there any additions to be added to the notary list?
We're good.
We're all good there, so if you'll unmute yourself, I'll ask for a motion to approve the notary list.
Motion approved.
I got a motion to approve, and who was that?
Mr. Glover.
Mr. Glover made the motion, who made the second?
Patton.
Patton made the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And if you will, when you make a motion, if you could tell me who's making that motion, that would help Ms. Doughty out, as she does. The next item for business, you are to elect five members, three regular members and two alternates in the Board of Equalization. I would like to recommend to you the following, that you've been sent information on, Mr. Blake Hall, Mr. Mark Brown, Mr. Russell, which is an alternative, Mr. David Young. Motion to approve this.
Motion to approve by Patton.
Go ahead, your second.
Second by Stafford.
Second by Commissioner Stafford, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
You're muted, Mayor.
We can't hear you, Mayor.
Muted.
You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Report from the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover?
No report.
Emergency Management Director's report was in your packet, so we'll not have a report from that, but I would like to hear a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
And that motion was by?
Weathers.
Weathers, and a second?
Second by Patton.
Second by Patton. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? As the record reflected, it was unanimous. Report from the Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich?
No report.
And the Sheriff's report is in your packet, I ask for a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
That motion was by?
Robinson.
Robinson, and the second?
Bernard.
Bernard. Commissioner Bernard was the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, a report from the Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford?
No report.
Right, Director of Schools' report was in your packet, do I hear a motion for someone to approve that?
Motion to approve, Stafford.
Commissioner Stafford?
Second, Robinson.
Second, Robinson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pressured Dees' report is in your packet from Ms. Murphy, do I hear a motion to approve her report?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion there from Weathers, do I hear a second?
Second.
I got the second there by Commissioner, um...
Gentry.
Who was that?
Gentry, I think.
Mr. Gentry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The record reflected, unanimous. The trustees' report, Mr. Major, was in your packet, do I hear a motion by somebody to approve that one, please?
Don't move.
I got a move, and that was, that was Commissioner Walker, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bishop.
Second by Commissioner Bishop, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As the record reflected, unanimous. Rhodes Superintendent's report was in your packet, do I hear a motion by somebody to approve that one, please?
Don't move.
I got a move, and that was, that was Commissioner Walker, do I hear a second?
Do I take it?
Second by Bishop.
Second by Commissioner Bishop, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As the record reflected, unanimous. Rhodes Superintendent's report was in your packet by Mr. Murphy, do I hear a motion to approve that one?
Motion to approve, Robinson.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Robson, do I hear a second?
Second by Bill Rich.
Second by Commissioner Fields. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? As the record reflected, it was unanimous as well. Ag Center report was in your packet, and that was by Mr. Smith. Do I hear a motion to approve that report?
Motion to approve, Gentry.
Motion, and a second by who?
Robinson.
Commissioner Robinson was the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As the record reflected, it was unanimous as well. The Expo Center report by Mr. Murphy was in your packet, do I hear a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve, Fields.
Motion to approve, Fields, do I hear a second?
Second, Rich.
I got a second, Rich, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As the record reflected, it was unanimous. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers?
No report.
No report.
No report.
No report. The Ag Center Management Report, Commissioner Scruggs. Commissioner Scruggs. Commissioner Robinson?
No report.
No report, okay. Commissioner Scruggs may have muted himself. If you get unmuted himself, that would be good. Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe? No report. Audit? There is a report in here. I have a report in there, Commissioner Marlowe.
We didn't have enough for a, we don't have a meeting.
Okay, didn't have enough to have a meeting, okay. Audit Committee, Commissioner Bernard?
No report.
Cable Tax, Commissioner Walker?
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanata? Got you. Commissioner Ethics, Commissioner Ash?
No report.
Commissioner Finance, Commissioner Weathers?
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton?
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash?
Mr. Chairman, the insurance committee met March 17th in the courthouse at 6:00 P.M. Copy of the minutes are in the packet. Make a motion, make your receipt and file.
I got a motion in the second there with Joe Ali. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Record reflected was unanimous again. Judicial, Commissioner Glover?
Judicial Committee met March 16th, 6:30 P.M. in the upstairs conference room. Move that the ministry receipt and file.
I got a motion by Commissioner Glover and a second by Commissioner Bernard. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Planning and Zoning, Commissioner McFarland?
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Gentry?
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs. Or Commissioner Rich?
The Urban Type Facility Board met last month. I think it was on the first of April. Minutes in your package, make a motion, make your receipt and file.
Second, Glover.
I got a motion and a second, Commissioner Glover, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Finance Directors' Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. I can hear you, yes, sir, and I can see you, yes, sir.
I can't understand anything you say.
Can't hear you there, Aaron.
Very vocal.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Aaron, turn your volume up. Turn your volume up. Turn your volume up on your computer.
We will, we will come back to Mr. Maynard's report when he joins us again. And we'll look forward to report from the Budget Committee, Mr. Marlowe.
The Budget Committee met April the 9th. And the minutes are in your packet, but we do need to make one correction. Will you please add that Joey Bishop was in attendance at the meeting? And I make a motion, we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Commissioner Marlowe?
And a second.
At that meeting.
So was that? I was too. Stafford was.
Okay, so we'll make those, we'll make those adjustments to that. Any other discussion about, other than people being added to the meeting? All in favor, say aye. Record reflected, now we'll move on with resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe.
I can hear you. Marlowe, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners in Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1920 square year to make an additional appropriation for the Tenetation Fund Number 207.
Motion to approve, Glover.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Glover. I got a, any discussion now on the landfill amendment to be moved? Hearing none, if you're ready to vote, I'll do it by roll call. You'd say aye if you choose to do, if you choose to vote yes or no. And wouldn't choose yes or no, I think would be probably better, say in the aye. Mr. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Bannock?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Scruggs? Mr. Costley? Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Weathers?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Marlowe?
Yes.
Mr. Vanata? Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Okay, I think I heard from Commissioner Scruggs. Mr. Scruggs, could you say yes one more time? And Commissioner Costley? Mr. Costley?
Didn't hear any, either one.
I have 23 yes, 23 yes. Okay, I got a yes then, and it was to Commissioner Costley. So I got, I got 24 yes and one unknown at this point. Resolution passes. Commissioner Glover, go ahead, I mean Commissioner, Marlowe, go ahead, please.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners in Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2019 2020 square year to make an additional appropriation on the 124, in the Ag Center. Motion to approve.
Second. Second.
I got a second by Stafford, a motion to approve by Commissioner Franklin. Commissioner Marlowe. Commissioner Marlowe made the motion, Commissioner Stafford made the second. Any discussion there? Seeing none, you ready to vote? All right, here we go, roll call again. Yes, Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Bannock?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Scruggs? Commissioner Costley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Weathers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Commissioner Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Marlowe?
Yes.
Mr. Vanata? Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Heard from everybody that time but Commissioner Scruggs. 24 yes and one unknown. Continue, Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution 24, 3. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners in Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2019 2020 square year to flat out and transfer in the election commission for.
Motion to approve, Glover.
Motion, Weathers.
I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Glover. I got a second by Commissioner Weathers. Are there any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Gentry has a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gentry.
How does this relate to the money we already approved to redo the building to make it, make it so they can move there? Is this extra money?
It doesn't have anything to do with it. This is money in their own budget that they're moving from their building and utility lines in order to pay for what they had to publicize to everybody about the change at the voting locations. So that happened within their budget and has nothing to do with the building money that's going to redo.
Okay, thank you.
They're not related. Any other questions? Okay, are we ready to vote? Ready to vote? Here we go again. Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Bannock?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Scruggs? Mr. Costley?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Weathers?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Breeze?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Marlowe?
Yes.
Mr. Vanata? Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Everyone, again, I got 24 yes and only one unknown. The resolution passes. Thank you, Commissioner Marlowe. Is there any old business to come before this body tonight? Yes, we're gonna go back to Aaron. Yes, we will.
Approve 1.225 million. Yeah, we. For the new concession stand, the bathrooms, et cetera. Since that school will probably be demolished, will that insurance cover the cost of those? And so what are we going to do with that 1.225? Is that going back in to debt service? Or is that what you've been talking about?
We have, and you're saying is the 1.2 that was set aside to build bathrooms and stuff at the school? Will it be redone with the insurance? Insurance cannot replace something that was not built to begin with. So it was not there on the front end. I would take this time, I guess, to go to Mr. Maynard, if Mr. Maynard is on here, so he could give his talk maybe, and he may cover anything of that nature as well. Mr. Maynard, are you with us?
I'm here, I don't know if anybody can hear me.
They can't hear you? Yes.
Yeah. Hopefully you guys will receive the letters that I send out and you give them.
We can't understand what he's saying.
Yeah.
We can't understand what you're saying.
Do you have that on the speaker, Aaron?
No, sir. I'm just gonna have to figure out a different way to do it.
Okay.
For tonight, and then by the time I have a different way to go about it, because what I'm trying to accomplish.
You sounded good earlier before the meeting started, did not?
Yeah, before the meeting started.
Okay, anything you want to add, Mr. Maynard?
No, again, all I'm doing is asking people to just be conscious and help us be patient, keep an eye on things and, you know, let's just work through this a step at a time. Some of what I'm asking.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that. I'll go back to any other old business now. And I guess I need your previous report, and I hear a motion to approve Mr. Maynard's report first.
Come on in.
I got a motion by a host of people. I'm gonna pick one.
What report?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna say, Mr. Walker was the motion. Commissioner Breeze was the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, thank you for that. Any other old business to come before the body?
Somebody go look for Mr. Scruggs.
I would say the mute button is probably on, and he's probably hearing every word we say. And any new business to come before the body? Do I hear one more motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And thank you for saying aye.